Thank you.
Morning Ben.
Good morning.
Okay, it is ten oh two. Going on ten oh three and I will open this meeting of the town select board. And we have folks with us in here in person and we have some folks on Zoom. Folks on Zoom, this is public comment time. Do you have public comment or do you want to wait until we get to specific items?
I'm happy to wait.
You're happy to wait? Okay.
I'm happy, I'm happy to wait for the shoe strap to catch you.
Okay, very good.
Ross, I'm tired, be happy to wait until we have a part on the, on the damn red note.
Okay, very good. In that case, I'm gonna juggle around the agenda just slightly. We have Rusty Keith with us and we have an abatement, we have a letter from our assessor. And I will just hit the high points from the assessor that the taxpayers filed for an abatement. Because they believe the value assessed doesn't accurately represent the amount of unfinished work as of April first. The taxpayers submitted photos to demonstrate this. The assessor has recommended granting the abatement. He completed a physical inspection of the property, he noted the heat system will be forced hot water. Bedroom count is two, not three, and it's April one. The unfinished was finished electrical and plumbing, the kitchen flooring was subfloor. He adjusts for the unfinished by minus thirty-five percent initially, after his inspection. He made a further adjustment to five percent, which now totals forty percent appropriate adjustment. So the assessment change is to reduce the assessment by nine thousand five hundred dollars on that property. Do you wish to speak to anything here?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to give the board some insight into why we filed this abatement. So I do have just a handout to go through the list of what we, where we were on this project.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, sorry. There you go.
Thank you.
So we didn't, we didn't have a visit from anyone from the assessing when, before four one. This is a visit that Todd's referring to, just happened about a week ago. And so, you know, that was the first time he actually physically came into the property or anyone else from his office came into the property. So this is at thirty-four Pleasant Street and we had a permit to remove the old house and replace it with a new one. We started that, took out the old house, put in a new foundation to the current setbacks. And modular units were delivered on five twenty of twenty-two, they were just without a roof. So the roof timber frame was set on August fourth of twenty twenty-two and the insulated panels were added twenty days later. And then it was shingled on September of twenty twenty-two. The electrical came in from the street finally, that took forever because we were operating on a generator the whole time trying to get this project rolling. And it came in on December of twenty twenty-two. The first floor was the finished floor I had installed on three twenty-three with the kitchen cabinets were installed. But we didn't have any water hookup and we didn't have any heat on four one of twenty-three. So it was basically a shell and there was no second floor build out yet. And so we started, the well was connected to the house on four three, but not the plumbing because the bathrooms and so forth were not tiled and they weren't ready for water. The second floor framing started on five one twenty-three, then the exterior trim started on six two and was completed on August first. Second floor drywall, internet and electrical completed on nine twenty-five. The interior painting was complete on ten thirteen and then the bathroom was finally tiled. And the plumbing was hooked up on eleven fifteen, so we finally were able to move in December thirtieth, right after Christmas. But there's still a punch list of stuff that's still keep completed and people can see that our garage has not been added yet. So when I reviewed the assessments, you know, can see our assessment was reduced when the house was taken away to down to improvements at twenty-four hundred. I mean, I'm not exactly sure what that is, but maybe that's the fact that there was still a well that we were gonna reuse. Or something like that and the septic leach field we were able to reuse. So those two items were out there. The land was valued at one forty-three seven hundred, so the total was one forty-six one. And that remained for four twenty-one, for four one of twenty-two. But then on fourth one of twenty-three, without any inspection or anything, it was increased to a hundred and, the improvements were increased to a hundred and twenty-four five. And I was like, wait, why, why is that? It wasn't complete, we couldn't move in, we didn't do anything. And so for fair and equitable taxation, I'm arguing that on four one twenty-three, our assessment for improved should have been the same as one forty-six one hundred. Which is a reduction of a hundred and twenty-two. On the backside of this page, I show for example, another property in town which was being built. Up on, it's actually two twenty-six Orchard Road. And there were pictures taken up there that I was privy to on twelve twenty-two of twenty-two. And it shows substantially the same amount of house as, as I had, plus a garage. I don't know what the interior hookups were at that time, but this was four months before four one of twenty-three. And if you look at the assessments, they did not change for four one of twenty-three. And that's a million dollar house. So for fair and equitable, I'm saying, keep me the same and let's do it for four twenty-four, four one of twenty-four. And we're happy to have him come in and assess the property as it's completed.
So you do not accept the recommended revision?
That's correct.
Okay.
But your sheet here shows all of these improvements that were done as twenty twenty-two that would cause the, the property to have more value in, as a, the, the assessment date as of April first twenty twenty-three, doesn't it?
Well, I mean, if.
You put on roof panels, you put on timber cement frame, you did electrical from the street, you did first flooring. All of that stuff was done before the assessment date of April first, right? So does all that result in an accretion of value?
All of that was done on the second page as well and there was no increase in that value. So if it's fair and equitable, why wasn't the million dollar house that was being built increased at four one twenty-three?
But we have to look at the timing, we have to look back at the, there's a lot we'd have to look at.
Yeah, I'm sure there are probably others that have different circumstances, but if, how, how long do we have to, we have until?
To, to apply, to respond to this? You can hold off, I don't think we have to, if they don't hear by July, it means they didn't, I think, get it.
Okay, okay, so. I guess I would suggest unless I hear differently from David or Ben, that we hold off making a decision on this and we will speak to our assessor and we'll try and garner some other information.
I just wanted you to be aware.
Okay, I appreciate that. So we will.
That was, that was our motivation when I saw the assessments come out and I was like, wait a minute, why didn't we go up and this property didn't?
Well, yeah. It's never exactly perfectly balanced, as you know, you've been around real estate long enough to know that.
But this is pretty far cry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for this information, that's helpful and we shall pursue this further in the coming days. Okay, very good.
You have one of those things from it, right?
I have one, yes.
I would make sure, I don't have one.
Oh.
Here.
I want one to go with this.
You have an extra one?
Yes. I'm sure that Todd will, I appreciate that. Thanks.
Great, and?
Tina, if you know, if it turns out that this other property that Mr. Keith has identified was inappropriately undervalued, are we too, were too late to fix that, right?
For twenty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to do it by December.
It sounds to me like that's the date, the.
Maybe, maybe not, it depends on permits, it depends on when they got them, if they got them, it, there's just a lot that needs to be looked at first.
You could hear from the assessor.
Correct.
Yep. Okay, and it is just about ten fifteen, so I would suggest we invite Mr. Hatch from CP CNH to speak to us. And I noticed we have a lot of folks that I think are from that committee, joining us, James Graham, Hunter Snyder. I can't say anything.
I don't know everyone's name either.
Well, good morning, everybody, and it's nice to meet the select board. I've been in this room several times during the process. And many congratulations on moving through town meeting and the adoption of community power. I'm not sure how you'd like me to sort of position myself, whether I should sit at the table or exactly comfortable with that? And I can start to sort of hand a few things out. As, as I haven't had the pleasure of meeting the select board before and don't know exactly what you do and don't know. The purpose I'm here today is to assist you in your deliberations on the cost sharing agreements and the policies of the coalition. Now that you have been authorized by your legislative body to move forward at your discretion with community power. So with that in mind, I just wanted to sort of tee up where things are at. But firstly, if I could just confirm whether or not you have been furnished with the, the, the policies and, and contracts as, as I'm going to discuss. It was some months ago, I can see there that you've got the packet that I sent via email, which is from a few months ago. And you will have in there a contract that has been pre-filled as best we can to assist the town of Lyme. But, but before I get into that, if I may, I'd just like to bring you all up to speed with where we are now post twenty twenty-four town meeting season. This is just a little slide from a slide deck that I used to introduce everything. And this just shows the, the, the current status of the coalition. So it's a very fast-moving organization, as you're probably aware, and only a year ago launched the first group of twelve. We now just got through our third launch in March and are teeing up for the fourth launch in June of participating communities. So what we have in total at the moment is fifty-seven municipal members and two counties representing over thirty percent of the population of New Hampshire. And of those communities, twenty-eight have already launched and fourteen are on deck to launch in June. And we're serving a hundred and twenty thousand customers and we're able to create nine million dollars in first year savings. And that makes us larger as an entity than Unitil, the New Hampshire Electric Co-op or Liberty Utilities. So you'll notice on that little slide deck that in red at the bottom is the group in planning and that's where Lyme is sitting today. We are contemplating the opportunity of a third launch in twenty twenty-four. The group that went through the twenty twenty-three town meeting were the folks who launched in March. So they had to wait a whole year to get on deck. But because of the experience that we gained in the, the first year of launch, we're now in a sort of expediting mode. And the folks that went through the twenty twenty-four town meeting had an opportunity, if they were ready, to, to launch in June. And then folks that weren't quite on that cycle, Lyme included, are looking towards a full launch. Only yesterday was the conversation starting to get a little more clear in terms of the commitment. The coalition does not launch willy-nilly. It has to pull together a group of, of, of communities who are ready, who have signed the cost sharing agreements and are all on deck. Simply because we owe it to our overall coalition to purchase power in the most advantageous way at the right time. And as we look to the fall, typically that is a time of year when electricity prices go up, so we have to be careful on that. There are also, and I don't want to bore you with all of the details of the regulations for the Public Utilities Commission, but there's a lot of noticing and things that has to go on. Where we stand today in terms of launches is that we have to prepare at least sort of three months ahead of the launch to get all of the names and addresses from the utilities, all of the work that's on our side of the, of the ledger. But that only starts to happen once a community has committed to moving towards a launch by signing these cost sharing agreements that I'm going to get into the conversation about today. So that just sort of sets the, the tone of where we are. And these agreements have been signed by all of the participating communities. So we now have twenty-eight that have launched and another fourteen that have used it. So roughly speaking, we're, we're in the forty or so communities that have had input into this, had a lot of legal review. This is not an agreement that is open to a sort of red line conversation, but we definitely obviously encourage full and complete analysis and comfort before any select board is signing. The question to you is, has, has this cost sharing agreement been referred to your legal counsel so far, do you know?
I think so.
It's there right now, I haven't heard that.
But they haven't had an opinion, understood. But I just wanted you to know that because as we've gained so, such a lot of sort of growth over this last period, often some legal counsel are familiar with it, another neighboring town's already gone through this so that they can perhaps avoid overly detailed in that of this.
I think ours has had some knowledge as.
With Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, I think he's looked at this previously. When, when you say that it's not open to redlining, could you elaborate on what you mean by that?
Yes, this agreement is, as, as it sort of implies, a, an agreement that is consistent across all the members of the coalition. And consequently, it is one that is only able to be amended and updated by a, a group membership meeting. So on the twenty-fifth, we've got our annual general meeting. The joint powers agreement, which has a lot of what's in this, in that, that you already signed, is up for some slight modification this, this, this April. The, the, the two agreements that are combined into this cost sharing agreement are not intended to be updated this year. So the one that you've got the, the draft copy of was updated once last year in, in May or June. And it is now the, the agreement that we will be asking those communities in your group to, to, to sign up on. So it is an agreement that is mutually agreed by all of the, the members. And consequently, not something that is a, an agreement that is individually negotiated with each community. And consequently, that's what I mean by redlining. Certainly, a, a lawyer could ask for more explanation, but we can't invite you to say this is the Lyme version of the cost sharing agreement.
Okay, so this is not an agreement between Lyme and this, and, and a single party, it's an agreement between all of the, all of the municipalities that are a member.
And, and because, now, when I meet select boards and that their level of engagement has been somewhat off on sort of left field while their, their aggregation committee have developed a plan and go to PUC and got through the vote, suddenly somebody says, cost sharing? I didn't think there were any costs. I think you've told us all along that there's no financial exposure to the, the town of Lyme. And there are, there are literally no expenses other than de minimis things such as legal review that you would be anticipating or even allowed to participate, participate in. And then suddenly we start talking about cost sharing. Well, the cost sharing bit is how we fairly apportion the costs of running the coalition and the costs of managing all of these energy contracts on behalf of the member communities so that no one community is burdened with the costs and expenses of another. And why I'm teeing this up is to say, this has been written for the long term. This has been written with the view of many aspects of the coalition that have not yet been actioned. We've been operating for a year. Our main focus is generating those savings to the customers that we've talked about to launch communities at an affordable rate. There are many opportunities in the future to leverage projects and special opportunities. And this is all baked into this cost sharing agreement. So I will elaborate on what I mean in this, this short slide deck, which really just explains things as best I can.
So, but this agreement, every time a new community joins the coalition and signs a cost sharing agreement, doesn't go back to every prior signatory for a re-signature, does it?
No, no.
So your, your position is just that that agreement has to be the same for everyone? It's not that it's a joint agreement, it's that it has to be the same because that's how you want it, but there's no, there's no, there's nothing legally preventing you agreeing from, with one municipality to have some slight change in it?
Uh, no, that's actually what I'm saying, that it is not negotiable to be.
I understand that you're saying that, but there's no legal requirement that that be.
I'm sorry if I'm confusing you. I'm saying, I think the opposite of what you're saying. This is a binding agreement that is, is absolutely consistent across all the membership as it, as it evolves. You are a member of the coalition and a voting member. And at the annual general meeting, as I thought I just explained, there are two agreements that are binding and cannot be changed except by overall majority of the membership and the cost sharing.
The, the cost sharing agreement says you won't, the, the CPCNH won't agree, won't enter into a cost sharing agreement with another municipality that buries from this one?
Correct, yes, so we're all exactly on the same page.
Unless the.
The overall membership votes as a majority.
Okay, I got you.
And I don't want to sort of sound confrontational or sort of it's take it or leave it, but it, it kind of is in a way.
But, well, yeah, we need to know that.
Yeah, yeah, and it, and it does bring up some questions that some towns have, need to feel more, more comfortable with. We're not under a great deal of pressure right now, as I said, we're looking at the earliest as a full launch. It would take three months, but without putting stake in the ground, we're looking at October as the real, really pragmatic month of the next rate cycle to really be able to look to. We have to go to our groups, our finance group and our risk management group to deliberate on how real that looks. They will make commitment and Lyme is, if you will, on deck to be in that launch group if that happens. But what we need to get done in the meantime is the approval of Lyme of the cost sharing agreements and the policies that I'm talking about today. But, you know, I was asked the other day, well, what is the timeframe? I said, well, you know, if this got done during the month of May, whatever happens in the fall, you'd be in good shape. So I'm talking about.
If it, if it doesn't happen in October, when, when would be the next date?
Typically March, yeah. Again, there are some sort of limitations. What we can't do is launch, a- as you know, I'm sure, the, the coalition currently just maps its rate changes to the, to the six-month cycle of utilities. So we are currently in the rate cycle that began in February and ends at the end of July. And the next one begins in August and, and then runs through to the end of January. So if you can imagine, those rates are to be announced sometime in July. So what we, we won't know until then what the rates will be for August. And if we're starting to sort of title launch in September and all the noticing, folks won't know what their rates are going to be before we're, we're sort of starting to talk about it. So that's why we're, I think, most comfortable launching in, in October. But as I said, there's a number of factors that have to be falling in place from a financial point of view so we can make commitment to that. But if, if, I'm sure you're interested in being on deck for that, so that's the sort of timeline that we're looking at for you, just to give you some points of context.
So that means for us as a board, we need to make a decision in May?
I think, yeah, by the end of May, we'd be very settled. It may be that we would be able to help you with an issue, but that's the sort of timeline.
Thank you.
So again, I, I know that you've got a full agenda today and I don't want to belabor the conversation more than necessary, so I'm very much open to Q and A. What this little slide deck does is just to sort of tee everything up conceptually. What we have for your consideration are the portfolio risk management, retail rates and financial reserves policies and the data security and privacy policies. Those are the policies that are enshrined in the cost sharing agreement and what we call the complete service bundle. So the only thing that the, the select board is being asked to consider to sign is this document. And as I said before, it has been largely pre-filled for the town of Lyme. The only things that we need to memorialize, I think, from the copy I sent you, is the date of your town meeting, which is that's the legislative body giving you the go-ahead to move forward. And then there are two sets of signature pages that just acknowledge that you, you, you are happy with the, with, with the policies and the, the agreements. And then there's just an assignment of a couple of key personnel that I will come on to in this deck that you have to just decide their roles. So that's really it. This deck, as I said, just explains the concepts of how all of these policies fit together. And I would reiterate that these are written for the long term, for the future. And many of the things that are referred to in here just are not actioned yet because they're, they're not, they're not, we're not ready for that, that kind of concept of a project. But it's coming very fast and in fact, Lyme has become a hotbed of, of, of coalition staffing. Because Scott May is our new senior energy analyst, that he's a resident of Lyme. And Mark Bollinger will be starting soon as our director of projects and programs, so very.
Stacked the deck.
Yes, you have, and, and that was against a, an international group of applicants, so congratulations to Mike. I'm looking forward to working with both of those definitely. But anyway, back, back to the, the deck, you know, the three R's, risk, rates and reserves. So the whole idea is that we have to work in lockstep, we have to be, as a, we are not only just a nonprofit, but we are a, subject to right to know laws, we're a government instrumentality. We have to be fully transparent. So anything that we do in terms of budgets or performance is, is, is public knowledge. However, you know, we do have to take some very serious decisions with some high degree of, of confidentiality, both on the customer ma- uh, data management side and also on the procurement of power on behalf of all of our customers. So we have commis- subcommittees who are staffed with people who have, they're all volunteers, but they come from a wide range of backgrounds such as financial services, power procurement, and also many people who come from the municipal sector and understand municipal governance. So we've got a very good range of expertise there that we leverage along with the specialty groups that we subcontract to who advise us on the big picture of, of power procurement. There's an organization called Ascend Analytics who are the experts in this. They make all the hedge recommendations, all the purchasing recommendations, which are approved through our risk management and financial, our finance groups and report out to our board. So with that, just to sort of show some of our objectives, you may have heard about this concept of reserves. We are a nonprofit, so we do not make profits, but we do obviously receive revenues and through the, the. But we do obviously receive revenues through the rates that we set. And that rate has three components. It has the cost of purchasing the power, the cost of running the coalition, and what we call headroom, which is the bit between that and the income. So in a for-profit organization, that would be for-profit. The way we manage that is by what we call community-wide reserves. The town of Lyme will have a certain amount of power procured on its behalf. And the proportion of that to the whole is the percentage of Lyme's share of the community reserves. So over time, once you've launched, you will accrue reserves. At the end of December, the 12 initial launch communities, including the neighbors here in Hanover and Netherland, collectively recognized $5.5 million in reserves. Those reserves are growing over time to give the coalition that financial stability and its ability to be able to borrow and to grow effectively. And our targets are to reach 120 days of cash on hand. Once we get to that point as a coalition, we will be able to become independent from a lot of third parties we have to depend on right now, who obviously take a certain amount of money to offer their services. And we can start to bring those services in-house, and we can start to drive down the costs of power procurement even more. So as a group, we are, that's our number-one goal in developing reserves. Once those reserves get to a point of 120 days, they are called surplus reserves. And in that future time, some of those surplus reserves may flow back to the town of Lyme. But the focus on reserves is to bring the whole coalition to a very strong financial position. So that's what we're driving towards. So what we want to do, what our risk management and finance teams are charged with, is to ensure that we set rates that are remaining competitive and undercutting the prevailing rates of the utility. But we do have that headroom so that we can grow the financial stability of the group. And that's a lot of what our risk management and reserves and retail rates policies all are intended to do.
Are those reserves, from an accounting perspective, allocated to the various member towns? So if a town were to withdraw, for example, they get their reserve back?
You're so far ahead of me, it's staggering. Absolutely, yes. In fact, I do have, and I don't want to take your time, but we've got the accounts, the pro formas till the end of December of all of those communities. And you can see in those how this is accounted for. And you're exactly right, the accounting is done. So that at any time, if a member wished to exit, we do have the accounting for what they accrued in reserves. And net of your obligations in terms of power procurement, they will be returned to the town of Lyme. So they are an asset, if you will.
One of the things that's always puzzled me is that we've been told repeatedly that this doesn't launch unless we're able to beat the rates of our cooperative and Eversource. I always sort of wonder, oh, gosh, you have these for-profit entities out there that are trying their best to be competitive in some low rates.
They are for-profit, but they're not trying their best. And I'll tell you why. Because by law, they are not allowed to profit from the procurement of electric supply. That is the whole cornerstone of why I'm sitting here today. Because for 30 years, deregulation intended to make the default energy supply of your utility the backstop. When you come to Lyme, you need electricity. So you call up and you have your electric co-op, and they connect you, and they give you an account number. But the intention was you would immediately then go and shop for the best rate amongst the organizations offering electric supply. The utilities and the electric co-op is a little bit of a bad example, but certainly all of the...
It's Eversource.
Certainly Eversource are not allowed by law to profit from the procurement of power. But even worse, they are not allowed to be strategic in how they procure it. They have two dates on the calendar. Pick the phone up, power please. Thank you very much. It is what it is.
So that's the reason why CPCNH believes that it can consistently undercut, say, Eversource on the cost of power?
Yes.
Is that CPCNH has the legal ability to be more strategic in its buying decisions?
Yes. We act like those third-party suppliers that have been available in the marketplace for many years. But certainly on a residential basis, very few customers have availed themselves of it. And also, unfortunately, because they are out-of-state for-profit organizations, their experience of trying to go with a third party is often less than optimal. Let's leave it at that. The co-op does also have the same responsibility and restriction of being a default energy supplier and does pass along the cost of power procurement at no profit to the co-op. So nothing we are doing is in any way affecting adversely the business model of the New Hampshire Electric Co-op. The only difference between them and the other regulated utilities is they can adopt a somewhat more flexible power procurement process. And they have, over time, announced interim rate reductions over these six-month periods when rates have met with, it's in their interest to reimburse their customer base. So they've got a little bit more of a nimble procurement process, but they are still not allowed to profit from it. And so therefore, don't, you know, put a whole team of people in. And we were very concerned. There's no way, I mean, our CEO comes from the co-op, and there's no way we want to destabilize an organization that serves its customers very well. And it's not the case. But I just made the point that their procurement process may make them a slightly different apples for apples.
But that's, it is sort of odd, isn't it? I mean, if they're not allowed to profit on the procurement of electrical power and CPCNH, it's not calling it profit, it's calling it building reserve, but it essentially is adding something on to the cost of that power in order to develop a rate. You would think that that would put CPCNH at a cost disadvantage relative to those entities. And yet, you're promising that the cost will be lower.
I don't see it that way. The focus of those entities is to profit from the provision of reliability, the maintenance of poles and wires and the revenue...
So that's where they're making their profit on...
That's all they're making it. And that's one of the confusing things because with community power and with any other third-party supply, you still get the bill from Eversource or New Hampshire Electric Co-op. And all of us would think, well, they must be making money on both sides of the table. But they are not and have not been able to, by law, for many, many years. The reason for that is that that's the trade for being a monopoly. You're not having a competition to see who makes the cheapest poles and wires and connections because that's not effective in providing power at a reliable level. So that's the difference, and that's really the market we're operating in. But what we're gaining is the momentum. And by being a nonprofit, you, as the town of Lyme, have a lot of say in how this develops. And this is just the saving money bit. There's a lot more interesting stuff that's availing you of the coalition. But right here, right now, this is what we're looking at. So portfolio risk management, all that these slides say is it just shows you the chapters. It talks about all our principles. It's very robust. It's passed a huge amount of scrutiny and is intended to be written for the long term. As with our retail rates policy, it just sets out the hierarchical decision-making process, exactly how thorough we are and how transparent we are in terms of how we procure power and how we pass those savings on to our customers, members and our customers. So unless you have other questions about that, the only thing I would say is that the page that starts with retail rates policy number two just talks about our rate structure and our rate types. Again, what we're doing right now is just one thing. We are running in lockstep with the utilities every six months. And our rates are intended to undercut the utilities and have done so for the last three periods at our granite basic, which is the same renewable content that is mandated by the state at 24.3% this year. So that's the apples-and-apples comparison with what you get from your utility. But we do offer three levels of higher renewables, 33, 50 and 100. All of those, assuming that Lyme decided to make its default the basic, which is what most communities have done. The only towns that have not done that are Hanover, Peterborough and Plainfield. And all of those towns decided because they had previously made proclamations of being ready for 100% renewables. They felt comfortable that they would notch it up to 33% as a default. And folks would have to opt down to receive the cheapest power and opt up to the 50 or 100. And it's definitely a choice, and there's a fight in here of where that choice will be made. But that's basically granite basic and granite plus. Right now, for New Hampshire Electric Co-op, both of those rates are higher. You may be aware that Eversource introduced a very low rate this period of 8.3 cents almost. That is over a cent and a half less than Liberty and two cents less than Co-op. And the reason for it is that they are reimbursing their customers previous periods of overcharging. I'll leave that there. But we were challenged, if you will, to beat that price, and we did, and we're at 8.1. The flip side is that you will serve your commercial customers in Lyme. I don't know the stats, how many of them there are. But if your commercial customers in Lyme are receiving power from Eversource, those folks are receiving a 33% discount right now through the coalition because Eversource chose to increase their rates by a cent per minute. We do not anticipate this repeating itself in August. And hopefully then the delta between us and the other utilities will be somewhat more normalized. But that's why we say we can't make a cast-iron guarantee to always, always beat the utilities. But it's our business model to do so.
I imagine these all move around somewhat. But can you give us just any kind of approximate, you know, how much more is granite plus going to be than granite basic or clean 50 going to be than granite basic?
You mean how much money?
Yeah, well, in terms of the rate difference. Or even just what it is now.
I can. And I will give you these rates. These are effective rates right now. So as we have just said, 8.1 is the baseline for the coalition. 8. It's just under 8.3 cents for Eversource. And for the co-op, it's 10.16 months. So you can see on the right-hand side, there is a sort of estimated cost per month, which is based upon a national average of the use of 650 kilowatt-hours a month for the residential customer, and how much you save by being in any one of the four choices through community power. So, you know, if you're an Eversource customer right here, right now, until August, you know, you'll be saving a whole dollar a month. But if you are a co-op customer, you would be saving, we're estimating, $13 a month. So a reasonably significant amount of money. To answer your question, the rates for granite plus are 0.3 of a cent higher. For clean 50 are 1.3 cents higher, and for clean 100 is 4.3 cents higher. And the relationship between those will change over time. But basically, it's in the right sort of proportional ballpark, if you want me to sort of characterize it. So you may be paying a little, around 50% higher for your clean 100 over a granite basic. And that's, there's a lot of sort of background that I could get into there, but that's the rule of thumb.
James, were we contemplating coming in with the granite basic as the default or the basic granite plus as the default?
Right, we haven't really discussed it. But, you know, I, it's open really to what you guys...
So we haven't made that decision yet? Is there a sense on the committee about what...
I don't know. I mean, the committee is probably of the mind that it would be great to, you know, have a little bit more of the green, you know, whether it's the 33, yeah, or the 50, but...
I did come in with the intention of not pounding you with paper, but the flip side of that is I'm missing an opportunity to elaborate. This is what we were talking about, about the charts about for the end of the year. And these charts are giving you answers to some of the questions. So basically, if you want to take a look at, you know, Hanover, for example, at the end of the year, then we've got that sort of middle column says joint reserves. So that's 173,000 out of the 5.5 million that's been accrued for Hanover. And the custom savings of 343,000 over how much those customers would be paying with Liberty. The next page is what's important to this conversation, which is the same group of towns. And you'll see that most of these launched a year ago, and their accounts. And then in that sort of back to the far right, you've got their product elections. And here you can see Hanover and Peterborough and Plainfield are in the green on granite plus. And it says here that over 90% of their customers remain enrolled on granite plus. A few, you know, 3, 4% opted down to granite basic. But if you look at the flip side, all of the other nine that launched the granite basic, the number of people that's actually opted up is, you know, a small, single-digit percentage. So that's the sort of lesson, you know...
People stay where you put them.
Yes, exactly. So if you have an interest as a town and you feel that you have a mandate from your voters, then, you know, granite plus is a serious consideration. I would say that, you know, once you launch, you're not locked in forevermore. So, you know, if you felt you wanted to exercise some caution, wait till next town meeting, maybe have a conversation then, say, we're thinking this has been successful. If we, as a town, decided to set the default 0.3 of a cent higher, I could do the math. Like I said, we could have, you know, done a lot of good work in terms of renewables by making that decision. And you could then perhaps have a mandate to move up to granite plus.
But if you do that, if you change it at a subsequent town meeting, aren't all the people who have already enrolled, don't they stay where they are or do you roll them all up?
Well, if you decide, we'll move every, we'll do a... I mean, I'm talking about something that has a pattern because we haven't got through this cycle. But I'm just saying, there are tools at your disposal to not be criticized as a select board for acting inappropriately on behalf of your...
But we also have the ordinance of, you know, being 100% renewable by 30. So there is...
So you do have that?
Yeah. And generally in town, there is the sense of wanting to have renewable energy as a resource. So, but that is a discussion that we would have, you know, where we want to set that.
I just wanted to make it clear that those are your two choices. And that's something that we will come to you to decide when you get to the point of... So the financial reserves policy, again, clearly lays out everything that we need to do to make sure that we are financially viable, that we don't put our whole coalition at risk or jeopardy, and we act with a great deal of discretion. Data privacy and security is, I would imagine, self-evident. But one of the things that, you know, we do is to keep the customer data separated from the community. It's not appropriate that you have granular data about the activities of the friends and neighbors. That's what we keep on our side of the ledger. We work with a third-party Calpine who do this for many aggregations across the country. And they have passed every level of scrutiny in terms of data security and privacy. They are our backend. When you call, email or go online, you will be interacting with the customer center from Calpine. They are trained individuals that can advise customers. They do the switching. They manage all that data. So we just keep it very clearly delineated and set. Again, there's no liability and there's no anticipation of any work on the town of Lyme. What we would typically do, just to sort of handicap it, is that you in these offices will have some information once you launch about what those rates are. So anybody new to TAN will have as a welcome pack. And they'll be given the heads-up about, you know, you're in community power and this is how you can save money. If they do nothing, like I said earlier, they will get hooked up by an Eversource or a co-op, and they will be on default until we pick them up in what is called a customer refresh. Every three months, the utilities give us the new folks who have moved in, ones that have moved out. And we send them out a letter, as we do with everybody before launch, so they're fully aware of what is going to happen. And they can elect to opt in or opt out or opt out.
Okay. I hate to interrupt because this really is important, Dan. I think we're getting good information, but we've got our police chief and our road agent here, and we really need to entertain them, I think, unless, do you have lots more to go?
Not at all, no. I have been fast-tracking this as best as I can. I have been fast-tracking this as best as I could while answering questions.
Very.
I just wanna emphasize what the cost-sharing agreements and member services contracts are. Really, this is just tying up everything I've just talked about. And this page, if I'm gonna leave you with anything to read a little bit more to get your head around is what is the the meat and potatoes of cost sharing. As I said before, it's not a cost that you are bearing, it is how we uh fairly allocate costs today and in the future. General and administrative, direct project costs, member services on the power supply and operations and any future member services that may be sort of a customer relationship between Lime and the coalition. Because over time, this is gonna get far more complicated and we've just built this for the long term. Unless you or your legal folks have questions, that's all I wanna tell you about that. We've thought this through, it's passed muster, it's not changing this year after a year of real-time scrutiny. So I think we've got a pretty robust uh contract here to offer you. Um, all of the disciples have, you know, cost recovery, it's all in there. And we answer questions all the time from uh towns about power certification. The only thing I will say, just to sort of complete the uh the thing is, there's two pages about termination and termination elections. In the unlikely event that Lime may find itself wanting to terminate the coalition, there is very clear provision selected. The only thing these terminations uh agreements are referencing is, again, you do not want to burden your fellow members with the cost of the procurement of power on behalf of your town. So what we're saying is that you would give notice and it would be a thirty-six month notice. Now, that does not mean by any stretch of the imagination Lime is on the hook for thirty-six months. But once you give that notice, the coalition would work directly with you, as the CEO in fact, to come up with a state of play on that date that you have notified us that you wish to exit. And we will make the most expeditious plans to make that happen without burdening the other members of the coalition. It could be very, right here, right now, it'd be very simple, we're only procuring power over a six-month period. But there is an opportunity to perhaps enter into contracts longer than that and you may be party to some of those. And so there may be an instance where a piece of your procurement will be thirty-six months in length and it may take thirty-six months to unwind the whole thing. But I don't want to give you any sense that there's any financial exposure on the town or any financial liabilities. It's just an orderly exit. And thank you so much for your time. It's a really heavy subject to get into, I'm always fearful when I'm on a big agenda. But um as James will attest, I'm only an inman or a fun.
Do you have a business card?
I do not have a business card. I have an email address and everything, um it's in processing, so I think mainly partly because we're young people who think business cards are the thing of the past. But um I can actually give you uh my contact information.
The email address, I'm great.
Yes, yes, and I will forward that on.
Christina can pass it on, that'd be great. Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you, you're very welcome.
Okay. Our next little bit of adventure, we're going to talk, we have received from uh Justin Ling and who's your?
Greg.
Yes, thank you. A request in writing to uh upgrade a section of a class six road and detailed out what they hope to do, which is repair a hundred and twenty-eight of the road. Stating that they believe the grade has dropped roughly thirty-two inches from its original grade. The repair will include replacing twenty feet of culvert to existing and re-leveling and then bring grade up thirty-two inches to direct the water into a ditch and through a culvert instead of over the road. Hopefully that will stop the slumping of the bank. Jeff, thank you very much. Okay. And Greg, if you want to take.
I love the way that the accent was annoying.
Yeah, it really makes it so much more agreeable.
It's calm. Perhaps you could lead us in the next discussion. Do you want to take a few minutes, Jeff or Greg, and elaborate a little or?
Well, we're not, in the sense we're stopping the road from eroding away, but we're not upgrading it in any way, just putting it back to the where it was prior to the it's slumping down and erosion and the culvert was working at correctly. So I just wanna emphasize, we're not trying to make the road, this class six road better, we're just trying to maintain it, help it to stay in that one spot. And after all the work is done, who's to say that love another crazy summer and it'll be a bunch of rain and it'll all wash away? That's, you know, it's just, it's a class six road, it's already been proven unstable, that's not an issue, that's why it's a class six road. We drive on at our own risk and so we're just hoping to stop this one part from washing into the brook and leaving a huge hole where the road will be unaccessible for anybody then at that point.
And then, and to that end, I think um it was brought to the town meeting for consideration either to discontinue the road or to have the have it converted to a trail. It was unanimously voted that it shouldn't be maintained.
Well, wasn't unanimous.
I'm sorry, over, no. It was an overwhelming majority of the vote, pardon my my uh, that it be maintained as a passable class six road. Not and and not, so right now it's not probably passable, as we know, there's actually several trees down, so.
I would just stop you to make another correction. It was not voted to be passable, it was voted to continue to have it be a non-town-maintained class six road.
Well, but but the.
Those words were not a part.
But a class six road is one that can be navigated by vehicles.
Not necessarily. Sometimes trees grow up in them, sometimes rocks fall down, they are not always navigable.
But the the owners of budding it has the right to maintain its ability to be navigable.
Most of our class six roads in this town are not navigable.
I don't believe that's true.
There are two, that one and the road off of Palpalm Lake.
But aren't, isn't, isn't the provision that as an abutting landowner, you can have it maintained so that in a state you can do logging or other agricultural purposes on the road? That's one of the statements.
No, without permission.
No, agree, so that's why we're coming with permission. But that's, the intent of that statement is that it can be maintained by those for passability of vehicles.
I don't agree with how you are phrasing that, so let's not rephrase what the state law says, what you.
All, I'm just emphasizing, the goal is to have it back the way it had been prior to the erosion, not, I think you made, you said upgrade the road. It's not really upgrading it beyond where, maybe, I I misheard what you, it was.
You could be my poor grammar dude, Julia, I'm I'm not used to writing up contracts for estimation.
It's all right, and just was reading.
My only comment is that the town meeting did speak on this and it was offered opportunities to close the road, make it a trail, which they both were drawn and they accepted the argument that it should be accessible um for people to to travel down and.
Which means no gates. Which means no gates and no expenditures by the town.
Right, well, we were not arguing about that right now. We're just arguing about whether it should be allowed to erode.
Right.
And cause damage to the road due to water crossing the road. And because the town spoke and it spoke clearly, it's, all it takes is one vote to speak clearly. I don't see anything wrong with this application.
Okay, thank you, Ben. I wonder if we have our chief of police and we have our road agent, I would like to hear from both of you as well.
Okay, great. First of all, Jeff, I wanna clarify which culvert it is that you want to replace.
I am.
Closest to your house, you know, the one above.
On my explicit, let it die rough. It was from the top where the class six road starts, point five tenths down through it. It's always the one that's farthest away from my house.
Okay, okay. So I was down there last week or the week before, I think Greg saw me the day that I was going up in there to take pictures. And I didn't do any real measurements. But the the culvert that you're talking about, that you wanna replace, seems to be flowing, what's the problem with it?
There's a little trickle coming out of it, but if you look down inside of it, it's it's actually been squished and it's sloping down, so the water's going under it. And what John Melindi, when I was talking with him, was saying, the real issue, um the culvert's not catching enough water and going out or it's going under it. But the whole thing is, once the grade gets to a point where it goes like this, the water's not going towards the ditch in the culvert, it's now washing down the bank and then causing the cracking and everything. And like I say, Scott, I'm not a dirt person like you, I know you don't.
I still don't even know which one you're talking about.
Yeah.
Break down all the way down.
The first from the top, yeah.
Yeah, not, the first, there's, come down over the hill, there's a culvert that's working fine and then it's the next culvert. There's actually three culverts in that stretch of road.
Okay, so you're you're not talking about the one that's coming directly off the bank from Mr. Buchanan's and flows under?
No, not that one.
The one that feeds into the brook?
Correct.
Okay, so there's another one further down, I'm assuming.
One where the road is is like this.
Yeah, this right here.
Yeah, and it's a single lane.
Yes. So I took a bunch of pictures, I went down there obviously for the purpose of taking pictures. I didn't measure the distance between what the road is and what the edge of the road is where it's now dropped off. But that's a big difference. And you can see from just this one picture alone that the amount of road that's dropped away just through probably this spring and I'm a stout hundred and fifty-pound guy. With all my stuff on.
That makes a difference.
When I stood on this dirt right here, it fell apart. You know, I I think, for me, we're getting back to the whole you know, the road is just in poor shape to begin with. I think, you know, even down here at the other culvert closer to your house, where it goes over the bank, if you really get brave and walk down over there.
I've never done that.
The uh the culvert that was placed in there years ago, several years ago, is actually being undermined because the water is coming from the uh Mr. Hartman's side of the road and going down underneath. So, I mean, at some point, this is probably gonna fail.
No, I, no, I.
You know, this is probably gonna fail and then we're gonna get another request to do something else to this road. I mean, I I think that, and I'll let Scott talk to this, but the pictures of the area where the road has dropped off is where material was put before, which leads to me to believe that those materials are too heavy for the existing road conditions underneath. And if you don't dig that all up and replace what's underneath or try to fix what's underneath, whatever you put in there now is gonna go away again.
Won't it eventually end up underneath?
No.
I don't think you're gonna be able to, because I think once you dig down, you're gonna lose all the thing.
Well, I guess, the whole, not to cause a debating, the whole thing that I'm just saying is that I'm not trying to make a highway and it's already gone next month. I'm not asking the town to put any money towards this, any labor or anything. We will do that on our own expense, this one time with the permission from the select board. It may be still a singular road, not what was there at one time. That particular spot has slumped a number of times and it's been brought up with more dirt and you're probably a hundred percent right. I'm not saying that dirt on top of dirt is causing an issue, might be causing an issue. But last time Rusty did it, it lasted two or three years. If you go further down the road, back in the sixties, I've been told stories of um Ally Pike. I was Ally Pike, yeah, it was the road agent. Guys coming up through and seeing Ally dropping refrigerators down a big hole that it washed out, packing them down and then putting some stumps in there and then putting some dirt. And that stretch is still going, so I'm not saying it's been makeshift, I'm not trying to make the road a highway. I would just personally like to do my best to have an egress out if the river floods or if I happen to wanna go to Route Ten. And I'm not asking to make it a highway.
I I just suggest that this is not gonna do any harm. If it were gonna do some harm, we'd see it over the coming years and he's already addressed.
That's what I would like to hear from Sean and 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 Scott, is 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 there a reason not to do this? Is it make it, does it, does doing, does permitting this repair to be undertaken, useless as that may or may not be, does it, does it pose a risk to public safety in some way?
I mean, I think every time somebody goes down that road, they're in the hazard zone, uh you know.
Again, I'd like to speak to the town meeting vote on that. There was a time to address the legislative body in town and we still are a democracy, they spoke. And they did speak clearly because the votes were in the affirmative not to close it, not to make it a trail, but to leave it the way it is.
And in which case. Which means leave it the way it is.
Yeah.
Well, which means that, you know.
They did not say, they did not tell the board to approve any upkeep, they said the board had the authority.
Right.
So I'm telling you from a safety point, I'm telling everyone from a safety point of view that every time somebody goes down that road, they're in danger, whether it's in that spot, whether they go up over the hill and it's in that spot. When that road is slippery, winter time.
Well, okay, but so what I wanna understand is, if you have a view as to whether this change that someone is asking to be permission to to make to the road causes the road to be more or less unsafe.
Scott, do you?
It sounds to me like what you were saying is.
I think when you add more material to it, it's gonna drop, unless they do.
Do you, do you think that saturated soils from the culvert condition that's that has, that's been described of the water leaking under it affect the amount of slump that takes place?
It's a possibility, but I still don't know where the culvert is, so.
You really wouldn't know whether, how big of a cavity or whatever it is unless you actually dug it all out.
But that is gonna require a DES permit to replace that culvert if it's a if it's a season, if it's not, if it's flowing all the time, it's gonna require a DES permit.
Do you wanna answer?
During the dry part of the year.
I have to, I have to school them for anything I do, I have to get permits.
Is it?
Not during the dry part of the year, no.
That's dry.
Yeah, unlike the one below it, which does have a spring above the hill, which does run twenty-four seven.
See, I thought that was the one you were replacing, because that one's gonna go. That's the one that I thought you were replacing.
Yeah.
That's not wrong.
I think we did hear from our uh planning and zoning administrator that this probably will require a DES permit for replacing the culvert. But before we go on, we've had people, do we have anyone that wants to speak that's on Zoom or?
Let's see if any hands go up. I haven't seen any hands go up.
Okay, very good, so, so um. Yes, David?
I I, look, I I hardly ever, I I really don't like to disagree with Ben because he's usually the voice of reason. And uh I also usually am sort of a laissez-faire. If somebody wants to do this at their own expense and it's not exposing the town to li- uh liability, as is the case here, I would be in favor of that. The one thing that would make me, potentially make me feel a little differently is if our road agent and our chief of police are saying allowing this repair to happen poses an increased risk to public safety.
Safe as repair does have, I realize the liability goes all on Jeff and Greg, okay.
I wonder if, before you respond, if you might uh, it sounds like you haven't looked at the specific place that he wants to do this. I wonder if it would make sense to have you and and Sean go out there.
I know where he wants, I know where it's slumping, but I don't know where the culvert is.
I mean, would it make a difference to your view if you went out there and looked at it or no?
David, let him finish. David, let him finish his thought.
The only thing I, you know, yeah, somebody goes down there and gets killed, yeah, they're gonna sue Jeff. This seems how the board of Slepman did give him permission. Who's to say they can't come back to town? That's always, that's the only thing that-
Legally, they wouldn't have any, you, you would be off the hook, but that doesn't mean that you're gonna be not subject to attorney fees and public display of poor decision-making on that issue.
I'm not so concerned about the, the legal issue, was, well, the thing I, I would like to understand from Sean and Scotty is, does, does making this change cause the risk to public safety to increase? Does it make it more risky for somebody driving over that road? Assuming that people are going to continue to exercise their judgment, good or bad, and drive over that road, does this, does the change that these guys wanna make, does it make it worse?
If it's right where the drop is, right now, if that's where the culvert is, uh, where you're saying the culvert is. How you gonna take the- how you gonna dig that out and retain that, man? Once you move it out, without losing the whole thing?
I'll tell you right now, that's in this engineering report exactly how to remove all that soil, and replace it with soil that's not gonna slump, that has the compaction that's required for that space, and it's a lot of work. Wait, that's a stamped report that describes exactly how to do that. If you wanna read that, that's your, that's your best bet. It's right here, if you want.
Um, Scott, we're just gonna dig up, from, looking under, it looks like the actual problems in the beginning of the culvert, so you wouldn't be working anywhere down in the loose dirt area, down that slumping area.
So how you gonna get a culvert a little bit?
Well, I'm saying, apparently, the only thing's gonna be to take that old culvert and redo that, or see where it's got squished, and just fix that area, and then put the the dirt back o- it's not gonna go to a two-lane road, it'll be back to, you know, where Rusty had it, which was a car and a half wide, right there. Not to where the original road was. Like, I just try to emphasize again, it's just making it a class six road that you can get a single car up through. And the signs clearly stayed on both ends. Drive at your own risk, so if somebody goes down and goes over the bank, which they could have a long time ago, many times over the last thirty-eight years, and got killed, you know, nobody did luckily, they have gone over the bank, they weren't killed. But, um, you know, just keep emphasizing, it's a class six road, I'm just trying to put some, get it so I can, for a few more years, get in and out.
If this-
And yes, it'd be ongoing.
Specific to passenger cars, I might not have such a problem, but we can't stop big trucks from going over that road. I just met a propane truck coming out of there the other day. I mean, that guy right there, he goes down there every day. UPS truck goes down there every day.
It's not passable right now. It hasn't been passable for a while.
Well, not, yeah, I mean-
Don't lie out, Sean.
Before the trees, no, yeah.
But right out, Sean, I see FedEx truck go up and back down. I don't see a one-way dr- I'm not saying they don't, okay, I'm not calling you alive. I don't wanna get you all haired up.
Not happening, so.
But, the ma- the majority of the time, we see them go up the bike, 'cause our house seems to be a frequent stop. Um, and I'm not saying, you know, but it's marked on both ends. It's like when you give somebody a ticket for saying no parking beside a park.
But that doesn't stop them from going too fast, you know? I mean, people don't pay attention to signs, especially when they're looking at this up on their dash, and it says, "Oh, take this road right down here to get to River Road."
I think as far as the whole shoestrapped road, the most accidents that you've responded to have probably been in front of my house.
Well, not only accidents, but, I mean, the amount of cars that get stuck down there, we went to four earlier during the, when the second, third, fourth mud season we had. Um, you know, they get stuck down in there, and then they call and want us to go help, and they want Scott to come fix the road, and you know, you call them a wrecker and they get all bent out of shape. Sorry, you went on a road that's posted.
I mean, that's the reality of it.
You know, well, I know, but that's time that-
That happens on the roads that are open in town all the time as well.
Yeah, but it's-
And there's plenty of roads that we could close if we put this kind of scrutiny to them.
I mean, I think the more times that we provide the motoring public a false sense of security whether the road is posted with signs or not, we're not doing the right thing.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm sorry to put you guys on the spot, but here's really my question, is, is the, the work that, that Jeff and Greg wanna do gonna make this road more dangerous, or is it rather that your, your view is that it would be better to let the road deteriorate into impassability so that no one can go over it ever?
Well, I mean, I think it'll, it'll improve the road for a short period of time, until it goes away, but now, the, the more, the more work that's done, and the more people that see it, the more traffic you're gonna have on it. And therefore-
But there's still plenty of rough spots on that road that slow people up and make them think twice about being-
Yeah, but they get nice and fast, where they come right out of there realizing that they made a wrong turn, and they're relieved to have survived it, and they rip past our houses, forty miles an hour.
Same at my house.
Yeah.
But the wrong turn, the wrong turn will be not helped by it being closed. They're gonna still, they're gonna still come down there and say, "Oh, I wanted to go down here and it can't anymore."
Yeah, but that's like-
Well, maybe what we should've done is at town meeting, uh, instead of all the things that did get passed, and, and, and the clear message that we got, we just suggested that we dynamite throw it.
Well, I think, I like to think I'm in America, and if I choose to go on that road, it's my responsibility. And, if the, eventually, it'll end up like the one down in Hanover that's impassable off, um, Piper Lane there. I mean, I ride my mountain bike down through there, yes, I do ride a mountain bike.
You told me that, uh, exercising was overrated.
It is. But, uh, you know, it's a shame, I remember it's we used to drive our cars down through there and everything else, and now it's barely a mountain bike passable, it's all washed out. And, you know, this is an old road and line, and a couple of people wanna just fix it so we can drive away from the river, which you guys have a lecture, you're right up next to Route 10. It's easier for us to go up through there to Route 10, when we're working over in Canaan, or several times in the last thirty-eight years, I've left work and found trees across the River Road, or power lines down, and the other way unacceptable, unpassable, and I've used shoestraps to go to work. I realize no town equipment, or ambulance, or anybody else would use that road, I understand that. But it's nice, I think, as long as we can have that access out, it's good.
I'll go back to the town meeting vote. You know, they, they, they made a decision not to take two courses that would've closed that off, and to keep it open. And letting it erode, as far as I'm concerned, is not acceptable, sending the- and, again, it may not be a cure, it may be right back to where it is next year. But, listening to Sean, he'd like it closed.
He's like, wanted it closed since forever, and I understand your point of view, you know, maintaining, back when it was a back road, class whatever road you wanted to change, 'cause people can duck down it and get away from you, and go down to the river. You know, I, I understand that, I'm not, you know, I was asking you to understand my side a little bit, too.
We're getting into silliness now.
I understand everyone's side, but from a safety point of view, it's there.
You, okay.
But I still, I still haven't, I've asked this a couple of times, and I haven't-
Ask, ask for a clear yes or no.
Do you think that the change that Jeff and Greg wants to make causes that road to be more dangerous than it currently is?
Not for a couple of years, no.
Thank you.
It's interesting, I think it does, because it's going to increase traffic, and the more traffic, more weight, it's- I was on the select board a thousand years ago when we went to town meeting to have it go from a class five to a class six. And the engineering studies at that time showed that to really make it stable, it needed a lot of work, and-
And, and at that time, the town chose not to put the money into it?
That's correct, because at, at that time, it was a huge amount of money, and-
So, but it, what I'm saying is, is that if, if at that time, they felt it was a problem, that people were still passing over it as a class six road, they would've spent the money.
No, I don't think so. It, Ben, it was a very different discussion back then. But, it was still a better road than it is today. And I still think it's, it's extremely dangerous. And I, for one, would not, never mind legal liability. People are gonna start using that, I'm gonna feel terrible because somebody is gonna get hurt. And that's just, I, I think it's irresponsible, and I thank you, your neighbors, you wanna use that road, I understand, and you're willing to take responsibility and the cost of repairs, but I, I think it's foolish, and I think it's dangerous. And that's my personal feeling.
Well, I, I understand that, Judy, and how many years ago was that road closed, and it had zero maintenance, and it's still there?
Twenty or so years ago, yeah, but it's eroded, and it's also, it's had opportunities to be kept up by individuals.
Patched together.
Yeah.
But it's still a class six road?
Yeah, it is.
So-
But it doesn't have any inherent rights.
There are no entitlements to maintenance.
Well, I move that we hold on Jeff's question.
Okay, you make a motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, that's motion. I move that, I move that, uh, we accept, uh, Jeff's repair of the road.
Okay. So you're gonna move that we grant permission?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll second that.
David, second that. Is there any more discussion?
Yes. Um, Mr. Killen, I'd like for you to explain to us in clear terms how the report that sits before you with its stamp from a professional engineer that's based on geophysical surveys of this road gives you assurance that any actions done by a member of the public that deviate from that report make that road safe.
I didn't say the road is ma- made safe, it's a class six road. Uh, it's, it's, it's not recommended that people be traveling over it all the time, there's signs up that, that, that suggests that. The town chose not to spend two million dollars.
Does it say two million dollars on that report? Have you read the report in the last three months, Mr. Killen?
I don't know where the numbers are.
They're on the back page.
All right, six hundred thou.
Is that a current quote?
That's from two thousand and six.
I was just gonna say, that number sounds really familiar to me.
You had it with three choices.
Yes, and, and, uh-
That kind of, that kind of money, why?
So it's twenty years ago, almost twenty years ago.
And, and at the same time, the road's still there.
The road is not there. It's on its way out, have you, have you not, not to have heard it in recent-
But again, if there are problems with erosion or damaged culvert that's causing that slump-
Do you know that, are you a geophysicist?
I'm listening to Jeff, he's like, you know-
Is he a geophysicist? Is he a geophysicist?
He doesn't have to be.
Is he an expert on the matter?
Doesn't change my view.
That's fine, but your view here as presented to this board is uninformed. It's not based on a fact.
That road is over two hundred years old, it was maintained by road agents who were not geophysicists for two hundred years, and managed by keeping the water from going across the road, maintaining culverts, and keeping that road from going into the brook. And I'm, don't have a lot of confidence that spending this kind of money, the town's never gonna go for that, it didn't go for that at the time, but keeping it a class six road, I would support.
Okay, I'm gonna close the conversation and ask for a vote. Ben?
Ben on?
You support it? David?
Uh, reluctantly, I'll vote aye as well.
Okay, and I'm gonna vote nay, so it is-
Well, I think this is the first time since I've been on the board that we've had an actual split,
Disagreement.
Other than, uh, other than a, uh, a recruit, recusal or something of that nature.
Okay. You will need to follow the plan, and you will need to, um-
Get permits, I guess.
Get permits.
Yeah, I can do anything to you.
And-
If that culvert's not water, we go through it all year long.
And there's also a bond, I believe you need to do, like, here is the permission, so-
David Robbins already left, uh-
I have the choice to choose.
Okay, so they need to sign it, and then they get their permissions, and then we will sign it as a select.
Right.
Okay. So be advised, you might wanna double check with David Robbins. Is he in today?
At one.
At one. He'll be in today.
David Robbins?
Robbins.
This is a zoning administrator.
Zoning administrator.
Big beard, big head.
He can give you some advice on that again.
DES and your writers.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanna ask Jeff one question.
Say that.
Would there's one? Well, we'll start with one. Where's the culvert in this section?
Your own copy, if you can read it.
If you actually, um, turn across, it's about here.
This lecture, can't read?
No, you're, it's, you can't, but you're just about to. Shouldn't focus on the facts.
So it's deep?
Yeah, that's okay.
Yes. Well, I, I don't, you wouldn't know until-
Well, it has to be deep, 'cause that's like four feet from here to there.
But whether, they put a cement rail around this, Scott? Around the end of the culvert at one point? It was all cemented in.
That's concrete, though.
And then, well, no, it's-
Hey, guys, could we ask you to take this outside, we got a full agenda, we need to move, move along.
Um, so, Dina, I would give the adequate paper.
So, yeah, as soon as, yeah, we have, we'll have to have the permit, and then I have to figure the bond and all that, so then you can sign away.
And do I have to make an appointment to meet with?
David Robbins?
David Robbins.
No, just give him a call.
Go back there.
Either give him a call, or pop in and see him.
And he'll be here for one.
Well, he's not gonna, he doesn't do the permit.
No, I just-
He can just give you advice on, yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's-
Or you can get on the webpage, the DES has a webpage.
Yeah, I'm real good at that.
Okay. Okay, ask him.
We've had, I think Ross and I have entirely discussed it.
Oh, yes, I've-
Do you need me to stick around?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Ross, thank you, no, I think-
For a debate or something?
Oh, we will be doing that, but later, I mean, we'll let you know. Scott? Hi, Ross.
Hang on one sec, Ross.
Do I need you, do we?
Do we need him later?
Um-
Yeah, for something there.
I think we are gonna need you later.
I think, um,
Yes, intent to-
And you need Sean for that, too.
Okay. So-
Stack of papers?
I'll call you, I'll, 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 um-
I'd like to, Greg.
Mess, oh, okay. I don't know, you'll need him then.
Okay, well-
No, I wanted to carry that conversation.
Yeah, I think you should be. Okay. Okay, let's break, let's regroup. And Scott, don't leave. The FERC permit. And Ross, we have a coffee. Thanks, Scotty. I wanna talk to you later.
Thank you, Scotty.
We have a copy of your letter that I believe you have sent to Concord or-
That letter, that letter has been received by FERC and I have an acknowledgement that they have that letter in place.
Excellent.
What we have, but I, I have not requested to be an intervenor because I think the town is better, uh, able to achieve its end if the town is an intervenor rather than Ross McIntyre. The basic issue here is we spent about a million and a half in repairs that are due to erosion caused by the fact that the Connecticut River is a lot closer to town roads than it used to be. And, um, it, of course, it's been there for sixty years, working away, destroying our roads. And we're about ready to get a license that could turn into another sixty-year period before the next chance we have to get the dam and the sale of electricity from the dam to pay for fixing our roads. So I think the town should intervene with a very simple statement that the dam is causing erosion to Lime's roads and there needs to be a mitigation fund that will recommend, that will repay Lime for the damage that the dam has caused to our roads. Very simple as that. The, if we don't respond now, in the next, uh, a couple of days, uh, we don't have, anything we do in the future will be worthless. Uh, this is our one chance to say that, yes, we object to what's happening and we don't wanna enter another long period during which if our town is damaged, we don't get any payment for.
So I-
So basically-
Go ahead. Please.
Uh, I, I would hope that Lime's letter, that Lime would get their intervenor status within the next, uh, few days because the time is closing fast.
Okay, we will be discussing that. We have a draft of a very short letter going to them. We're not asking for intervenor status as far as I know. But we do have a draft of a letter to go to the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, otherwise known as FERC. And it says basically that the Select Board shares concerns previously expressed in way of attaching to those letters in concert with other municipalities bordering the Connecticut River between New Hampshire and Vermont, most especially riverbank erosion impacting private property and town roadways caused by dramatic flow fluctuations created by the dams. And we're also attaching the letter from you and a letter from John Mudge and the twenty thirteen study of the Wilder Dam. And I believe when last we talked about it, that was about the most that we were able to do, but I have-
Just add the intervenor.
Do you want to be an intervenor?
What does it mean?
Intervener means that you join in the lawsuit.
Con, Lime, con, Lime, uh, a, a piece of paper with, uh, figures on it. Uh, simply a letter asking for intervenor status.
Okay.
It does not, and, and it does not entangle the town in any kind of contract or promise to do anything. It just says that, that the Lime wants to be able, uh, if things don't go our way and we decide two or three or four years from now that we want to sue FERC, that we will be able to do it. And, um, I think for no cost, uh, virtually no cost at this moment, we can reserve the possibility that we could take him to court to save the town a couple of million dollars. We should do it. And, uh, so if, if we don't, if we don't say intervene now, we're, we're walking away from an opportunity that we will, in all probability, regret somewhere down the line. If we had intervenor status, uh, with respect to the last contract, the last, the last lightening, we wouldn't be in a position now where the town is responsible for this damage.
Well, I, I can't speak to that, cause I don't know that. But thank you, Ross, and I think it looks like David and Ben are agreeing to ask for intervenor status.
I, I know.
You're not?
No, generally intervenor status means that you're asking to participate as a, a party to a litigation or a- and I'm not sure what being an intervenor in a regulatory approval process like this entails or involves. I don't know if there are costs associated with it. I don't know if there are benefits attributable to it. I'm not confident that, that you, the only way to preserve your right to sue for damages is, is if you ask to be an intervenor. I just don't know. But that's the kind of thing that if we wanted to consider- please don't interrupt me. Uh, I'm not, that's the kind of thing that if we wanted to consider-
Wait a sec, Ross.
I, I-
We would, I think-
I'm looking to-
I think if that's a thing that we would wanna consider, we would have to reach out to council and have a discussion. I'm not sure that's something that can happen in two days.
Yeah.
Or three days.
They, well, you can look at the date that is sixty days from the time they offered us an opportunity to comment and to, and to ask for intervenor status if we wish to. The intervenor status does not encumber the town at all. And it doesn't have to be, uh, all it needs to be is the action of the board. It would've been nice if the town had voted that at town meeting, but I was not around to introduce it as a motion at town meeting. And somebody else could have. But it does not entangle the town and it can be a single individual asking for intervenor status. If the-
Not for the town.
Not for the town.
If for themselves they can, but not for the town.
For themselves, yes.
Mr. McIntyre, I may be correct about that, but I just don't know.
Okay.
And I think we, I would wanna have a conversation with, with our, with our lawyers before we did something like that.
Yeah, cause I don't think we had intended to do that, Rich.
So I, I, I know even less than David, uh, on the legal side of things. It does strike me that this is an opportunity to become a formal part of any negotiations. Clearly, it, I, I can't imagine that if we were listed as an intervenor and it turned out there's a whole lot of work or a whole lot of whatever, we could, we could back away and say, no, thank you, we declined to participate. But I do wonder if-
I would, I would think-
Ross, let me finish.
Ross, hold on. Ross, hold on.
I keep muting him, I don't think he's on.
Yeah, you have to wait.
And, and so, but I think if we fail to meet the deadline to request to be an intervenor, then we're out, out of-
Out of luck?
Out of, well, yes, out of the line, yes. Thank you.
Um, okay.
I don't, I don't even know if that's correct.
I don't either, because I think-
Well, you'll just have to find out.
We will, we will ask Dina-
You will. You can't find out this minute, but, but you can find out and then-
If we need to-
We can add to that letter and-
Send it off.
Right.
The Connecticut River Conservancy would probably answer all your questions about the intervenor status immediately.
Okay, so will our town council, I'm sure, and I would rather we consult with them.
Yeah, we have to, we, we, I mean, we- Look, if, if I was having a conversation with you over a beer at, at, you know, I don't know where Stella's, I, I might take your word for it, but, but when we're acting on behalf of the town of Lime, we have to be kind of cautious about that. And even taking advice, even taking legal advice from a, from a nonprofit like the Connecticut River Conservancy isn't something that we should be doing on behalf of the town.
No.
We need to consult town council if we're gonna take legal action such as requesting to, uh, uh, become inter, uh, intervenors in a, in a regulatory action like this.
Yeah.
That's my-
Okay, I, I agree with that and I think, I, I think that if it looks, Dina's gonna try and get an answer today or tomorrow at the latest. If we need to, we can have an emergency meeting and then if, if it seems like it's something we should do, then we can get together and we can do it. Uh, we do have a draft letter which I think certainly shows our intent and our thought process over a number of years.
And you guys have, and the board, not maybe this board, but other boards, have sent letters. Wait, one sec, Ross. Have sent letters and have sent in the resolution that was done in two thousand and two.
Twelve, thirteen, thirteen, even.
Two thousand twenty, March tenth of two thousand twenty. And, you know, so, and there was the thing that you sent in and had done with Lebanon and, so you have been active.
We have been active.
Even though it wasn't you three, it has been active.
Yep. Okay, so, um, I think we're, we're finished with the FERC discussion. We will get together if it's something that's warranted. And I'm gonna move along. Thank you, Ross, very much for your information and your letter and your interest.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Enjoy your vacation. Weirdo. My brain is mush.
I know.
Um, we have-
Last meeting, huh?
Me, you're not even halfway through yet, so.
Okay.
I'd have some coffee.
Last time I did that, it was not good. Let's take, uh, Hunter Snyder was here. Did he just leave?
His computer's still here.
Okay, so he'll be back. We'll pick his up when he comes back. I would like to-
Does Mr. Snyder have?
An abatement?
He has an abatement.
That was the one that was recommended.
It was in the crease. Yep.
So, let's see, we have several oaths of office. I am going to move the following oaths of office. Recreation Commission alternate Ashley Leucema. Conservation Commission alternate Sarah Zahendra. Conservation Commission alternate Russell Urschler. Conservation Commission alternate Jill Kearney. Conservation Commission Lynn Brown. Conservation Commission Anne Flood. Conservation Commission Susan McKenzie. Or as we learned on Monday, Suzy McKenzie.
Suzy. Suzy Q.
Conservation Commission Margaret Shan.
She was there, so don't worry.
Yes, she was there. So I moved David second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye.
You're the, uh, you're the rep on the conservation commission?
No, I'm the rep on the recreation.
She was at our rep meeting.
And, and Sue came in to talk about the pond. And, and one of our members called her Suzy, which tickled me cause I don't think she's a Suzy. But she took it in good spirit.
Have you ever seen that Seinfeld? There's a Seinfeld.
I never have seen any Seinfeld, I don't think. Okay, and we have-
Missing a great source of amusement.
Okay, I will have to take that up. We have three manifests.
Yes, you do, and you only saw, I know.
And so tell us-
They're very short.
Tell us the numbers.
So-
I only have one question. What was the guy in a hotel room in New York for?
I wondered about that, too.
Picking up fire equipment. It was two guys for one night.
Yeah.
They went to New York.
Just to be sure.
I would've asked, but the amount was so low, I figured. I was sort of surprised they could even get a hotel room in New York for that amount, but.
Out in the country.
Upstate.
Upstate, yeah.
Yeah.
So the first-
So the first one is-
Probably those were reading them.
A hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and sixty-one, oh two.
Okay. And the next one?
And the next one is two hundred and thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and twelve, sixty-one.
Which is the one you sent to us already, Dina?
That one.
That one, okay.
The one sixteen.
Do you have copies of the other ones that we gave you?
I'm gonna give this to you, but this one, I just want to let you know, this, this one I just read consists of our Mascoma Bank payment for the fire station, our New Hampshire retirement payments, um, and then a couple, uh, smaller ones that are, um, overseer of welfare.
Okay, and the last?
And the last manifest is twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and twenty-one, forty.
So we'll hold off doing anything until we have a chance to look at those.
Yes.
Okay.
Well, the first one you guys have, should've all seen.
Yes, the one sixteen.
But the last two ones.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
As a procedural matter, Mr. Snyder is down at the other end in the office, so-
Okay.
He could be available anytime.
Anytime. Okay, thank you. Well, we'll work through some other things and then we'll see where we are.
Okay, now, did somebody, um, move the manifests?
Not yet.
Oh, okay, sorry.
There you go, Ben.
Hold on a second.
Moving, David is seconding after he looks at them. Did you move all three, Ben, Ben? Okay. Oh, very good. You'll be up next.
I'm ominous, though. I already had a word with someone.
What was the Snap-on tool, Dina?
Oh, I forgot to look at that and see what it is. Something, something the highway guys needed.
Yeah, that's regular. Those guys stop in all the time.
Yep, they do. Suck them in to buy and stuff.
You good? Okay, we'll take a vote on these. Uh, Ben moved, David seconded. Also, favor say aye on the manifests.
David aye.
Aye.
Judy aye. Okay, they are approved. Okay, we have an abatement for Hunter Snyder and Heidi Robbins, thirty shoe strap. Their house is still on sacred ground. It hasn't slid down into the brook yet. And we have a letter of recommendation from, is this right? From Todd. The taxpayers filed for an abatement because they believe the value assessed doesn't accurately represent the amount of unfinished as of April one, two thousand twenty-three, as well as the listing information. They have an appraisal since the purchased property and are suggesting a time adjustment and then applying the town's equalization ratio to the assessment. Unfortunately, the property has changed since the appraisal was completed, so the methodology they suggest isn't applicable in this case. Our assessor has recommended denying requests. It has completed an inspection of the property and noted that the heat system is an electric heat pump forced hot air in both buildings. The basement for card one is not finished living, it's unfinished. There was a second bathroom added to the building on card one as well. The basement garage on building two was converted to finished basement. Unfortunately, the changes in listing data have caused the assessment to increase for two thousand twenty-three, which we cannot go back and add tax for the value not captured in two thousand twenty-three. The renovations have progressed since April one, two thousand twenty-three, and the assessment for two thousand twenty-four will be adjusted to reflect the updated data in construction. The revised assessment is three hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred dollars. An assessment changed in the positive of twenty thousand, six hundred dollars. So, do you wish to speak to this?
I, I do not have anywhere near as carefully, carefully organized a set of supplementary materials as the earlier applicant had. I, I came here today because I, I was curious what the result would be and I also wanted some clarification on the equalization rate and how the tax is calculated. And I think I got some of that information from, um, Dina earlier, but I don't know if it's possible to just get it one more time clear, just so I- I don't actually disagree with the methodology. I think it makes, makes sense, but I am pretty ignorant on it, so I didn't know if there was a chance that you could try to explain what's, what are the moving pieces and how this works.
Would you like to, or would you like to maybe talk about that?
Well, I'm happy to meet, right, and give him all the, you know, stuff we have about that.
Yeah.
Rather than take time in here unless it's gonna change your mind to, of what you wanna say.
That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would move that, um, we deny the abatement request.
Yeah, this, yeah.
If, are we gonna, have a chance to look at it? Okay.
We're just going along with thoughts.
Yeah.
You're voting to accept his re- recommendation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Ben aye.
David aye.
Judy aye. We're approving acceptance or accepting. Thank you. And, and do touch base with Dina. She will walk you through it again.
Yeah, we have some good info.
Okay. Okay, coming up, so we came up with those, coming up, we have
Thank you, Ben.
A land use change tax on Stores Hill.
I'm really sorry, I didn't get who moved that and seconded it.
I moved it, David seconded it. So again, we have a note from our assessor. The property had a new house built on an area previously assessed under current use, which now it no longer qualifies. And the two thousand twenty-one assessed value for the additional area to be removed, point five acres, was two thousand eight hundred dollars. And then the equalization, equalization ratio for two thousand twenty-three was sixty-four point eight percent, which would result in an equalized value of four thousand three hundred dollars, which results in a land use change tax of four hundred and thirty dollars. And do we need to move to accept this? I guess we should.
Yes, because there's a warrant.
Oh, okay, so that's just land use change tax, thirty-one Stores Hill, I'll move it.
I'll second.
And there's two places to sign, please.
And all those in favor say aye.
David aye.
And Judy, that's approved. Okay, done those, done that. We have a solar exemption for Allison Schwartz, eleven Orford, eleven Orford Road. Of fifteen thousand dollars. Paperwork is in their packet. And let's see, it's roof mounted. I think that's it.
Excuse me, and there, sure, I can put the dates in.
Okay, so, original cost, thirty-five thousand, eight hundred fifty-seven dollars, duh, duh, duh.
People are spelling my name with lowercase letters now. I've been demoted.
Let me think, what did you do that might have caused, no, just kidding. I'm pretty sure it was probably just a little-
Gotta print our names?
I can do that, just sign it.
Because you won't be able to read my-
Okay, so, um, solar exemption, what do we wish to do with this?
I'll move it.
Thank you, David, thank you, Ben, all those in favor say aye?
David aye.
David aye.
Judy aye, that's approved.
Just, just out of curiosity, we get these solar exemptions, but they're provided for, right, in the
I don't, I don't-
Do we actually have any, could we deny it if we wanted? Or is this actually a discretionary thing?
Well, they didn't, I would, I would hope if it didn't qualify that, that it wouldn't even come to you, but you know, you might look at it and see something that jumps out that
Okay.
you might say, oh, how come this, and you might go, oh, wow, we missed that. I hope not, but you never know.
Okay, is this this, solar exemption?
Okay, so that's what we're doing, we're evaluating whether it qualifies.
You're just signing because you're the head honchos, that's why you're signing.
Okay, we have a veterans credit qualification worksheet. And, excuse me, it's five hundred dollar credit. And this person actually was unfortunate enough to be in Vietnam or thereabouts. And what do we wish to do with this one? He qualifies based on the criteria.
I'll move it.
Second.
Thank you, Ben, all those in favor?
David aye.
David aye.
Judy aye, it's approved, and, uh, okay, then. We have an intent to cut for Walter and Kathleen Swift, sixty-three Pinto. And Swift, this one is Swift. Okay, have you looked at this, Ben?
No, I just, I have all their on it right now.
Okay.
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye, the Swift intent to cut?
David aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye, that's approved. The next one we have is up on Preston Road. It's an intent to cut.
I'll move it.
No, it's, sorry, it's on Washburn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, it should be Washburn, yeah. Yeah, it is Washburn.
And my understanding is that this cut has taken place under a previous intent to cut that had expired, and then this one now is making it legal? Is that correct?
No, the first one, they, this is on, um, this is on a new piece of property. This was a, um, they owned the whole lot.
Yeah.
Then they subdivided it, sold the other part where a bunch of the logging was going on, and this section was going on. Now, the only section that at, at this location, um, is a separate lot now.
Okay, so this has not-
And so this is an intent to cut
On the new lot.
For this lot to start the new year.
And they haven't done this cutting yet?
It's, well, they, they, they'll continue to cut, it's the same lot. Even though it's been subdivided now. This is the new year, so it's the new year
Okay.
For intent to cuts. Right, but on the same lot, in the same place, and the same everything, right?
Okay, and-
It's not like we really do much about this.
Well, the only thing I'm concerned about is if they're putting in a logging road with access, that they are aware that unless there's a special approval given, they need to remove that logging road access.
Right, and I would presume, and I will check with Jordan to make sure that, that new information we have about logging roads
Yes, make sure
went out to them.
They are aware of that, okay?
I know the logger is aware of it because they, they've been given it before.
Okay.
But I'll make sure the property owner, that she gave it to the property.
Okay, very good, and so, um-
What does that say, do you know, or is that new stuff saying?
It just says that there, if they get any kind of a curb cut or any kind of a permission to put this logging entrance into the property, it doesn't determine that, that it's definitely the driveway. They, they have to, because some people get a driveway permit, and then they do the logging, so then they think they have two accesses to their property, and the logging one has to go away after.
So, Maggely, who's moving that intent to cut?
I'm moving.
You did, okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, all those in favor say aye?
David aye.
Judy aye. So, very good.
Thank you.
And, yeah, I know, I'm sorry. Fifteen minutes, it was forty-five minutes, it just threw everything off, minutes? Has everybody had a chance to look at the minutes?
Remarkably, I have no commas.
Oh, I move.
Okay. Dave put him down, all those in favor say aye?
David aye.
David aye.
And Judy aye, very good. They are approved. Now, the New Hampshire Lickin Commission has sent us a notice of an application. Yes, approved.
We don't have enough, you have discussion on that.
A wicked tasty LLC have made an application to the Division of Enforcement for a seasonal sports recreation facility cocktail lounge, licensed under the provisions of RSA one seventy-eight colon twenty-two. The establishment is located at thirty-nine Grafton Turnpike Road.
Yes.
We have that piece of information. We also have a note.
Sean's still around?
Yes, we're gonna need to get him in here, I think.
I'd like to hear from him about this.
Uh, the skiway, this is basically a skiway.
Yes, right.
Right, well, can I just say something?
Sure.
Um, I think the planning board looked at this, what was their response?
The planning board wasn't sure that it really had much say about it, I mean, I guess the planning board, I don't know. You remember, Rich, I think the, 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 the idea was, well, maybe we could ask for site plan review if this constitutes a change in use, but it wasn't really clear that it does constitute a change in use. So the planning board kinda looked at it and went, uh, we don't really know what, 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 if anything, we, we could do about this, and I think they, their general view was to defer to the select board. That is a perfect summary of my recommend, my recollection.
Defer to the select board.
In other words, you don't recollect anything.
So, the, um, it would seem to me that, and I have not gotten far enough back in the minutes to find that original lodge approval, the new lodge.
I'd send Dina the, what's, what we did was in the zoning.
Yeah, I saw that agreement, that was kind of useful. Always need to see, was that from Ben? Did they mean certain level?
I don't know, you didn't send me anything. I found, I found one letter.
Yeah, I told you, they looked up four point five something in the zoning ordinance about the skiway, and it addressed those issues, it said that if a, a new parking facility were built, it would go back to the original twelve point one oh.
Well, all I can say is I've done a ton of reading over the last weekend, and there's certainly documents in here that's worth reviewing.
So I'm gonna propose, if you don't mind my interrupting, that we punt to our next meeting and maybe we can all refresh our minds on how they got approved. Um, because I'm, I don't, hey, I like a good party as much as the next guy. My concern is out there, I'm not always sure that there's a lot of oversight.
Well, so, let me just pause for a second here. All we got was a notice, a letter notifying us that this application has been filed.
Right.
It's not clear that, that we have any kind of approval authority, or that if we sent a letter back saying we strongly disapprove of the granting of a liquor license here, that that would even have any effect.
It says right in here, they'll take it into consideration.
No, they'll take it into consideration, so, but in order for us to respond, I, I think, at least me, I wanna hear, and if Sean comes in and says, I'm arresting drunk people up there all the time, there's been fourteen DUIs and da-da-da-da, that, that, that's pretty persuasive. But, uh, we don't have any data right now, I don't think, about the past uses of, uh, uh,
That they had liquor licenses.
This is what has triggered this, I will tell you. It has triggered a huge concern about parking, uh, events, uh, all kinds of stuff. And, and Sean can, I don't know, maybe he had to run off, but I haven't heard from him. Um, so I think you do need to hear from Sean. But I think in the course of, I guess I just assumed that the planning board would say, oh, wow, they're gonna put in a cocktail lounge and a sports recreation bar, and, but that's a change of use, so that, we really should have a site plan review.
Is it a change of use?
Absolutely, that's a ski facility, and it's an educational, it's an educational facility that gets tax exempt.
Yeah, it comes down.
They, they haven't had alcohol there for quite some time. Maybe, they've had somebody else that has had beer and wine, I think.
In a cooler.
Um, well, I don't know, I think there was a-
One year they had that big tent they set up, they were selling.
There was one, right, there was one, um, one person that was running the cafe part of it, that probably had beer and wine. But there's generally not a liquor license that, there had not been for a long time.
Um, let's get Sean, let's get Sean in here, because, um, the, some of those other issues are addressed in the zoning ordinance, which is they, they're supposed, supposed to man, manage their parking
Yes.
with attendance. And that doesn't say the attendance-
That's a different issue, right, that's a different issue, but it can be connected.
It, it would be connected, if, if-
And that doesn't say that line police should be those attendants.
Right, that's right.
Yeah, I think-
No, I know, I think there's, there's unknown, yeah.
We need to follow up on that, and then we also have, um-
Well, you could find out what exactly
Yeah.
the plan was out there, because I think it's
Well-
between the permit, between the permit that they've gotten and some other stuff, there's definitely a, a plan.
There's-
Is there a response date?
I emailed her and asked her specifically
I didn't think I wanted.
Um, how long you had to respond to this.
And she said?
Nothing yet, I haven't heard back.
I, we could say, in an email, we do have concerns, we are speaking with our police chief.
You could.
And
Gathering info.
Gathering information, and we'll be back in touch with them. I mean, I, I certainly don't object in theory, but in practicality, to me, it raises a lot of red flags since they can't even place the parking lot. It's just, uh-
And I think you'll hear a lot from people that are around that area and neighbors, I know, I'm trying to be neutral here. Um, because when you go back to any time the skiway was talked about, and especially when they were changing
Yeah.
the lodge, there was a ton of concerns about parking and about people not being able to drive through because it's a through road, and about people skiing across the road, and about safety, and about noise, and there was just a lot.
We got wonderful, wonderful architect plans of this walkway going over the thing from the lodge to the ski lift. And they replaced it with two plastic cones in the road.
But there are some agreements, especially from the caller, as to what needs to be done, and it's not being-
He was more responsible than you.
It's do, he did it, and he did a better job at it, but now it's really not being done, so.
And also, there's an issue with respect to taxation of the property.
But it's the new guy, and you might not know.
Yes.
Given that it appears to no longer be served in an educational, or being used in an educational fashion, and it's being leased out to a for-profit entity.
Right, and- I would like to-
And we also constantly have to, you know, they've, they've taken ownership of giving line kids free skiing, and that did not come from dark, but that came as a condition that the landlord, who gave them the land, built their skiway on, made when he gave them the land.
Right, it's not their
So it predates-
largess that our kids get to ski there.
So they keep bringing it up, like it's, this is this wonderful thing that we do, when in fact, it's not.
Well, it is a wonderful thing, but it was an agreement.
It is a wonderful thing, but that they knew, that they knew is not, um, if you're taking credit for something, then they're on what you did.
So I would like to suggest that we send an email to this lady, or person, Mark, whoever you corresponded with. And also, let's look at, at Hayward's letter about the tax exemptions and how that is, study it for a while, and, and we're, both of those maybe next meeting?
And, okay, so review that before you meet with anybody else from the college.
I think so.
Maybe the meeting after that we could arrange, okay?
Yeah.
Because I have three people now that we're working on getting in here.
Okay. Okay, and-
Not the next, so they-
Yeah, why don't we have the next meeting just be
Us.
the line folks and Sean and
Yeah.
Okay.
Scotty, if you have some appropriate-
Yeah, I think that might be, because we are hoping to do some roadwork out there, and we could get our ducks in a row, and then we can speak with them.
Okay.
Folks, and then, that leaves two, two quick things, and then we go into non-public, I am sorry to say.
I'm sorry.
So we've been requested this E nine-one-one data
Oh, yeah.
to support broadband mapping. I'm pretty sure a couple of months ago, probably February maybe, we declined to participate because line has its own line fiber. And we've gotten a second request, which I still don't really understand, it has to do with broadband mapping. This project through the University of New Hampshire, and they wanna use Department of Safety E nine-one-one location data.
Right. They want us to give them our nine-one-one data, it's confidential. Your nine-one-one data is confidential, you're not supposed to give it to anybody.
Um, I don't think-
Would you use our nine-one-one data?
So they want, well, nine-one-one is just the data about where people live, and it has names and addresses and-
Well, emergency res- Well, emergency response.
Emergency response. I did ask the woman, you guys, like, um, in your packet is the printout that, or that you were emailed, that explains it a little bit more. And then I did specifically ask the woman if they had a confidentiality agreement. See, I'm learning, David. And, um, and the response was yes, and she sent it. Um, but you know, I'm not an attorney, I don't read it, but, I mean, I don't know, sorry.
You read it, but.
I read it, I don't, I don't understand all that stuff all the time, but, um, it's not, that's not my thing either. So, I don't, I don't know.
So.
I was glad to hear they had one.
So we can punt this again too if you want, but, um, we just need to be mindful that we should give them an answer, either we're not participating or we will participate.
And it is to just gather info, it doesn't mean.
How much work would it be for you guys? Do you, do you have a sense about that?
How much work would it be?
Yeah. Well, look, my take on this is you have a sort of semi-governmental entity that's trying to gather information about broadband access. And, you know.
For the future.
Yeah, because they're trying to plan and they're trying to do stuff that maybe may, may not be helpful to the line, but it might be helpful to the line or maybe it's helpful on a statewide basis. And, you know, like, if you came to me and said, well, we can give them all they want and it doesn't cost us anything and there's no downside to it, even if it doesn't benefit us, why wouldn't we do that? But if, but if you tell me, well, no, what they want is gonna require me and Jordan to spend, you know, a week.
Hours, yeah.
Buried in a, buried in a file, digging through crap to, to, to compile it for them, then I'd tell them to go fish.
Right, no, no, it will not. What we, and, and what we give them may not be exactly what they want, but it'll be what we have already compiled so that it would be, uh, to write a report and print it. Um, I was more worried about the confidentiality part because again, we're not allowed to release that stuff.
Well, what is the, where does that rule come from?
911 just comes from, it's like, um, we have a special program that's called 211 that we release to the state of New Hampshire for roads and 911 addresses. It's the same kind of information. So, I, I don't know what makes 911 so special, especially when you could Google somebody's name now and find out where they live. But that's, you know.
Yeah.
Also.
It's not my decision.
The way I would come at this is if there is some sort of a requirement that we keep that information confidential, I'd want to look at what, where that comes from, what the requirement is, because a lot of times there'll be exceptions in there that say, oh, you could give it out under these circumstances or you could give it out if there's a confidentiality agreement and it's for a public purpose. Something like that. If there's no exception, we don't want to break the law. So then we would say, no, we can't give you this information because we'd be breaking the law if we gave it to you. But I'm guessing since they got this information from dozens of other municipalities, there must be some sort of an exception or, or, but, but you have to look at the source of the restriction in order to figure that out, right?
Right.
You know, you don't know where that comes from?
No.
Do you know?
No, I'd have to find out and I'm sure I could find out easy.
Do you think Joe or somebody like Joe Driscoll would be able to, or, or how? Yeah, if you can.
Yeah, I'll ask him, yeah.
So, but, but wait, so that kind of goes back to my first question is, I don't want to add hours and hours of work to your plate to help somebody out, you know, just to be a nice guy. If it, if it's gonna be a big burden on you or a hassle, then I would say we should just say, at, at least my view, we can tell them how it's handled. But if it's, if it's not, if it's something that you could figure out quickly and easily without a lot of work, then.
Yeah, from what I understand, I don't think it would be a big time consuming. I don't think you should spend money to ask Joe Driscoll.
Okay.
I think I should contact NHMA and they should be able to answer it.
Okay. It's not a lot of work and not a big time shot for you.
Yeah.
Well, at least that's how I think about it.
I'm good with that, Rich.
And I have a professional interest in broadband stuff. Uh, could I get a copy of the requests that you received? Maybe Dina can send it to me or something?
Oh, I think maybe, let me see. I just.
I can email it or you can just.
Do you have it? Yeah.
The original letter, I don't know if you still have that or not.
I have it. Do you, can you find it, David? It's near the bottom. It's not on letter, Ben.
I have the, I have the one that I printed that shows more info when you go into their website. But.
I think that's it. David's got it.
Okay.
Thank you. Yeah, you emailed that out too, right?
Yes.
Grab your copy.
Okay, so, this is very exciting. We're going to have a non-public, but first, we need to do a little bit of housekeeping. We need to reassign.
I nominate Judy as chair.
He knew exactly where it was going.
See who was gonna jump on that one.
Gonna get her quick.
Okay.
Give a second on that.
I'll second.
Okay.
Ben aye.
I abstain. Um, and then we need a vice chair.
We have a vice chair?
Yeah, Ben.
I think it's Ben, I will nominate Ben, turn around, spear play.
Fair play, I like this. I like the way this is going.
Okay. Just be glad there isn't a secretary.
I was just gonna take him out and say, well, that means you get to be the secretary then.
So we have one, two, three, four, five, I think, six, uh, committee assignments. I traditionally have done the budget committee, I'm willing to continue with that unless someone has a big yank to want it.
I believe that we keep them, boy, they are.
Well, we can do that with one exception. David asked to not be planning board anymore. It conflicts.
Is there one I could swap for, because that makes it hard for me to take my daughter to her boxing class?
And.
Just don't show up.
I do that sometimes, but it seems a, a, like a bad thing to just never show up because she drives every day.
How would you like to do the, um, conservation commission?
Yeah, I'd swap for that.
Okay, you've got that.
When does that be?
The first Monday of the month.
Okay, sure.
Out of the Lime Center Academy building.
Okay.
And.
Well, that's closer for me too.
And you'll do the, you'll also do the energy committee still? Okay? And so, Ben, you are doing the heritage commission or the, whatever that is, historians?
No, it's the heritage commission. The historians is a private group that's not a town.
Oh. Um, I will rudely take on the planning board only because having 20 years with many nightly meetings, I have an allergic reaction to night meetings. But anyway, and I'll stay on the rec commission if you want or if one of you guys wants to be on the rec commission, you can. Dina is the chair of that committee, just.
I think the rec commission meets Thursday nights too.
No, they actually meet Monday nights.
Before Monday.
Oh, so why were you here on that? Oh, no, that was.